Everybody and thank you for joining us. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to welcome everyone to our virtual meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Planning Commission. And I would like to explain a couple of things about this meeting format. Tonight, we have our commissioners and staff visible on a video feed. Members of the public have been invited to comment on Wheat Ridge Speaks in advance of tonight's meeting. And are also able to participate live through a web link or by calling in on the phone. You can find that information on our meeting agenda at www.wheatridespeaks.org. All members of the public who are participating live have been muted. When it is time for public comment at the start of our meeting or as part of the public hearing, we will unmute all members of the public. And we will, and then I will ask you to speak in order based on the first letter of your last name. Or if there's only a few members of the public that are looking to speak, we can just go ahead and you'll raise your hand and be recognized. When we unmute the public, please keep background noise to a minimum. You may choose to mute yourself through your own device. If you do not plan to participate at all this evening, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on channel eight or on Wheat Ridge speaks.org. If you do plan to participate in the meeting when you speak, please first state your name clearly, spell your last name and give your street address for the record. The time limit for public comment is three minutes per person and speakers may not donate their time. When there are no more speakers, I will close the time for public comment and public participants will again be muted. We appreciate your patience with this virtual format. As with our in-person meetings, we hope, our hope is that we can create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. And we do appreciate your help in this process. Thank you. I would like to now call the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for May 20th, 2021 to order. May I get a roll call of members, please?
I'm just gonna start the recording real quick. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Ari Kritschiver.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Danielle Larson.
Here.
And Jaheem Simbi, Will Kearns and Melissa Antwell are absent tonight.
It's now time for our pledge of allegiance. You should, we should see an image of our flag. All right, let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
The States of America.
To the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God. And equal opportunity. And justice for all.
Thank you. Before we continue with our agenda, I would like to explain how we'll be voting on items tonight. Once we have a motion and a second, all commissioners in support of the motion will be asked to raise their hands and keep them raised and visible until the recording secretary acknowledges that she has recorded those votes. After voting, the reporting secretary will read the result of the vote to confirm it is recorded correctly. We use this protocol for any voting scenario tonight. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Any discussion? Is there a vote on the order of the agenda? It's not, is there? We will now vote on. Thank you.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next up, the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. There are, I believe, two sets of minutes that we're looking at for approval tonight. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 6th and April, was it the 15th? I believe it was.
If we can actually vote on them individually, yeah, if we can start with April 15th, that would be great.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 15th?
My motion, we approve the minutes from April 15, 2021.
Second.
We'll now vote on the motion.
Motion carried five to zero.
And we will, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April, I'm sorry, May 6th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion?
I motion that we prove the minutes of the meeting from May 6, 2021.
Second.
Well, we will now vote on the, on the motion.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, now comes the part of the meeting where we, we open the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject that is not appearing on the agenda tonight. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Please give us your name, spell your last name and share your address, please. We'll now unmute all participants and please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak at this time, you may mute yourself through your own device. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? And do we know how many people are interested in speaking tonight?
We have a fair number of people joining us, so I'm unmuting people now. If anybody would like to speak on a topic not appearing on the agenda, go ahead and use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. I'm not seeing any hands yet, but I do have everybody able to raise their hand if they would like to speak on anything not on the agenda.
If you'd like, we can go through the alphabetical list.
It's okay, no one's unmuted, no one's raised a hand.
Anybody interested in speaking, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom. We'll give it another minute or two. So it appears there are no, nobody is looking to speak during tonight's opening public, public forum. I will, at this point, close the public forum and begin the meeting. For our public hearing portion of our meeting tonight, we have one issue on the agenda. And we will be adding the appropriate staff and when applicable, we'll be adding applicants to the video feed. Their screens will be shared if presentations are being made. They were made a part of the video feed until the conclusion of the respective agenda item. After the presentations, the commissioners will ask questions of staff and the applicant. And then we will conduct the public comment portion of the hearing. This will be conducted, conducted in the same manner as earlier by unmuting all public participants. Typically administer an oath of office, or I'm sorry, an oath for any participant in a public meeting. The staff, applicants and the public, but in this virtual meeting format, we are administering, administering the oath in a different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that your testimony will be the truth as you know it. I will now open the public hearing for case number, sorry, case number WZ 2101. This is an application filed by Davis Partnership Architects on behalf of SCL Health for approval of a specific development plan for the construction of a 630,000 square foot hospital and parking garage on 26.93 acres of property zone mixed use planned mixed use development. PMUD and located at the northeast corner of 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive in Planning Area 1 of Clear Creek Crossing. We will now have the staff report on tonight's agenda item.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Stephanie Stevens. I'll be sharing my video presentation here in a moment and then applicants. But first wanted to enter into the record, we had a couple of letters of support come in, which I emailed over to you all just before this meeting. One from Evergreen and the other from Evergreen multifamily, the Outlook Apartments site there. So entering that into the record and then I'll go ahead and share my screen, play the video presentation and then the applicants after that. Hello, my name is Stephanie Stevens and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ 2101, which is a request for approval of a specific development plan for the construction of a 630,000 square foot hospital and parking garage on 26.93 acres. I would like to enter into the public record, the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan and this digital presentation. The property is within City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject site is located at the north end of the Clear Creek Crossing Plan Development, known as Planning Area 1 of Clear Creek Crossing. On the east side of Clear Creek Drive and north of West 40th Avenue. Interstate 70 borders the site to the east. This is a recent aerial photo of the site looking south. The hospital parcel is shown with a red star. This is a good view of the infrastructure as well as the progress of the adjacent multifamily site, which is currently under construction. West 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive are now complete and the hook ramps are open to the public with final stages of that construction happening as we speak. The site was zoned Plan Mixed Use Development or PMUD in 2018 and is a part of the Clear Creek Crossing Development. The site is entirely surrounded by land that's also zoned PMUD within Clear Creek Crossing. To the northwest is the multifamily site, which is nearing final stages of construction. And the adjacent site across Clear Creek Drive to the west has an active SDP application in for review for a hotel. To the south, across 40th Avenue, has an active land use SDP application in for review for retail and restaurant uses. And the site to the north contains the regional trail and also is a part of the PMUD Zone District and is reserved for open space. To the east is Interstate 70, which is elevated just slightly above the site. This request for SDP approval is the second step in a two-part approval process pertaining to plan developments. The first step occurred in 2018 when Planning Commission and City Council approved the Clear Creek Crossing Plan Mixed Use Outline Development Plan or ODP, which established the zoning. The zone change also included approval of a vision book that establishes intended design and architectural themes and materials, as well as the design pattern book that includes the more substantive development regulations. In 2020, Planning Commission and City Council approved an ODP amendment specific to this site to modify the permissible height related to the elevator shaft. This site is also unique and then it gets reviewed by the Architectural Control Committee or the ACC, which was established specifically for the Clear Creek Crossing Development to ensure compliance with the design pattern book. Third-party review and consistency across the project. It's comprised of members representing both the developer and the city. The ACC has provided their recommendation of approval. The applicant is requesting to build an approximately 630,000 square foot hospital building, which is about six stories with 210 hospital beds and a four-story parking garage on 26.93 acres. The site again is located in Planning Area 1, PA 1, which is also called the Mill District in the design pattern book. And it denotes this area as an employment-based sub-district in Clear Creek Crossing. The overall vision for the 26.93 acre site along I-70 in the development is to create a medical campus to serve Wheat Ridge residents and the West Metro community. I'll show all of this on the next slide, but a short overview of the requested proposal is it'll have access off of both West 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive. There's providing for planning area connectivity between the adjacent parcels. There's a courtyard plaza out front, internal courtyard, internal to the building, and it also connects to the regional trail. And there are pedestrian connections connecting the site from internal uses out to the east, south and west. There will also be a future medical office building, but that is not a part of this SDP. The site can be accessed from two main vehicular entrance points, one along West 40th Avenue and the other along Clear Creek Drive, which interconnect to form an internal loop and complies with the design pattern book for internal circulation. The main entrance will eventually become signalized, which is access off of West 40th Avenue and is designed to be a street-like drive with sidewalks on both sides leading up to the building. A limited access drive is also proposed on the east side of the site from West 40th Avenue, reserved for emergency vehicles and ambulances, continues around the site to create a full perimeter loop. It also connects to the multifamily site to the northwest to provide interconnectivity. Sidewalks are also prominent within the site. It's accessed along 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive, multiple points of connection. It connects through the site as well as to the hospital, to the multifamily sites, the northwest, out to Clear Creek Drive on the west side and to the regional trail on the east side. The multi-use trail is proposed to be 10 feet in width, to be located in C dot right of way and is, will match up with the existing trail that is there today. There are a total of 1,611 parking spaces proposed, 384, which are contained within the parking garage. And they do meet code requirements. The project exceeds, also exceeds the minimum requirement for 20% of the gross lot size to be landscaped. There's a retaining wall on the north side as the site lies quite a bit higher than the trail itself, and I'll show perspective views of that later on. The SDP also show, is shown to comply with the grading drainage and traffic plans for Clear Creek Crossing. Here are the north and south elevations, so what you will see from the trail to the north and from West 40th Avenue to the south. The maximum height to the top of the hospital is proposed to be 102 feet and the maximum height of the elevator just shown in the little gray on top of the building is 135 feet and meets requirements. The architectural style is driven by Clear Creek Crossing Design Pattern Book and the Vision Book, which call for the modern agrarian aesthetic. It requires strong attention to be paid to the pedestrian realm. Final design reflects primarily gray and bronze metal panels, glass curtain walls and fiber cement board with stone veneer accents at the base of the primary entry, which I'll show better in a moment with perspective views. The primary entrances are emphasized with varying roof forms, entry canopies and transparent doors. The architecture has evolved throughout this review based on staff feedback and materials provided in your packet show how the detailed standards, the design pattern book are being met. The east and west elevations are shown here. The east is what you'll see from I-70 and the west is what will be seen from Clear Creek Drive and the adjacent multifamily site. Materials are carried over on all four sides. Parking garage is proposed to be situated to the south of the hospital building, connecting by way of a pedestrian bridge. The garage is proposed to be four stories tall and approximately 59 feet in height. The parking garage has also been through many iterations based on staff feedback through the process to enhance the facades that are visible from the streets. Final design reflects a unique and cohesive design utilizing primarily bronze metal panels, cladding of varied depths and metal glazing with perforated panels to screen the top story. The west elevation includes metal cladding to match the building and will eventually be screened by the future medical office building. This is a perspective view from above, showing the view from 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive intersection. This is a good view of the building forms, which are layered with step backs and upper stories to scale and enhance the ground level pedestrian experience. The exterior building planes are articulated with different materials, transparencies and dimensional changes to create visual interest. This is a view looking northwest coming from the parking garage. This perspective shows what people will see at the main entry. And here's where the primary focus is on the pedestrian facade. Here's the view from I-70. I-70 sits just slightly above grade and the upper levels are the most prominent from this viewpoint. And then here's a view of the south facade of the parking garage looking from 40th Avenue. This facade will be of similar design on the east and north elevations, which can be seen from I-70. And this shows kind of how close that medical office building might lie, which is why we didn't require a lot of screening on the west side. Here's a view looking south from the trail. It's hard to see here, but the trail, so it sits quite a bit lower than the elevation at the Loop Drive and is well screened by the landscaping. The utility corridor will be located on this side and will be screened from view. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies as well as completed internal review. We did not receive objections, objections from outside agencies and coordination with the districts is ongoing. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. No calls or emails have been received to date. Before the hearing, the case was published in the newspaper and this presentation was also available to view on Wheat Ridge Speaks website. No public comments were received in person, by phone, by email or on Wheat Ridge Speaks. Staff finds that the SDP is consistent with the ODP and is in compliance with all standards set forth in the zoning document and the Clear Creek Crossing Design Pattern Book and in city code. The SDP is also consistent with the purpose of plan developments and all agencies conserve these, this property. And for these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the specific development plan with conditions as outlined in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, in just a minute, I'm going to reload the applicant presentation. Hold on just a minute.
And thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. It's gonna auto-start on me. Okay, here we go.
To the Planning Commission and the citizens of the City of Wheat Ridge, good evening. My name is Steven Chung. I'm the Senior Vice President of SCL Health for Supply Chain and Real Estate. On behalf of SCL Health, I'm very excited to present our new hospital project and to seek approval for our site development plan. In my presentation, I will be covering four areas. First is providing background on SCL Health and the Lutheran Medical Center. Second, giving an overview of our proposed site development plan. Third, to discuss overall schedule and lastly, provide some closing comments. We would like to start a conversation by providing background on SCL Health. We are a faith-based community healthcare provider, who we are is reflected in our mission, vision and values with a focus on serving our communities, especially the poor and vulnerable. Our commitment to the community is reflected in the community benefit we provide. In 2020, we provided 294 million of charity care and community programs across our system. SCL Health is headquartered in Broomeville, Colorado, has eight hospitals and 140-plus clinics serving Colorado, Montana and Kansas. Specifically to Denver metro area, SCL Health has been serving the Denver community for nearly 150 years. Our first hospital, St. Joseph's, opened its doors in 1873. The last new medical campus SCL Health built was Good Samaritan in 2005. I would like to pivot our discussion to the Lutheran Medical Center. Lutheran has a long legacy in the community of Wheat Ridge, starting in 1905. More details about the Lutheran Medical Hospital and the Lutheran Campus. Currently Lutheran has 400 hospital beds, employs over 1,500 people with 900 physicians providing services and 500 volunteers. We are the largest employer in the City of Wheat Ridge. Annually, we have 14,000 inpatients, 54,000 ER visits, 1,800 births and 110,000 outpatient visits to our campus. Lutheran plays a significant role in providing community benefit programs to Wheat Ridge and the surrounding communities. We've partnered with over 200 different community organizations in Jefferson County to do community needs assessments to tailor our programs to meet the needs of the community. In 2020, we provided 41.8 million in community benefits. And most importantly, Lutheran provides quality healthcare. We are consistently recognized by various healthcare associations for our quality care. Shifting our focus to the overview of the SDP. Location is defined as the Mill District within the Clear Creek Crossing Official Development Plan. This ODP and its companion design pattern book along with the City of Wheat Ridge Development Standards and Codes are the basis for the design of the hospital and campus. We have worked collaboratively with the city staff and the Clear Creek Crossing Architectural Control Committee throughout the design to ensure we are meeting their vision for the development and all code requirements. We appreciate the guidance they have provided to us along the way and thank them for their support of the project. As explained in detail in Stephanie's staff report, we are proposing a new medical campus that will consist of a 210-bed hospital with a rooftop helipad, surface and structured parking. A future medical office building will be developed by a third party and will be managed with a separate SDP. One of the key site plant elements is creating pedestrian connectivity. Internal walk and bike ways are planned throughout the campus, connecting parking to building entries and outdoor spaces and linking to the public walks in the Clear Creek Crossing Development and the greater community. As desired by the ODP and the City of Wheat Ridge, direct pedestrian connections from the medical campus walkways to the public realm are provided in several locations for cross-connection between adjacent uses. We are also excited about the connectivity to the regional trail system. There is a 10-foot wide trail connection between the heavily used Clear Creek Regional Trail to the north of the campus and West 40th Avenue to the south. To enhance the cross-connectivity as desired by the city, we are providing direct access to this new trail segment in several locations from the medical campus. Development permitting of this connection has been underway for many months and was fully coordinated with the City of Wheat Ridge and C dot permitting is now complete. In terms of vehicular access, key features are main public vehicular traffic shown in blue provides clear access to the main entry as well as cross-access to the adjacent parcels in the Clear Creek Crossing. Vehicular flow is designed to separate ambulance traffic from the main public traffic. Ambulance route shown in red is located away from the apartment and close to the highway. The service corridor highlighted yellow are kept around the perimeter of the site. As it relates to parking, a total of 1,611 parking stalls are provided on the campus to serve both the hospital and the future medical office building. This count satisfies the medical center's peak parking demands based on national and regional parking metrics and cross-checked against existing parking counts at similar suburban and SCL Health community hospitals. In this view, we show the location of the rooftop helipad. The location of the helipad in the northeast portion of the campus is consistent with what was presented in our ODP amendment completed last year. And as been presented last year, the rooftop helicopter pad is the best location from a safe And as been presented last year, the rooftop helicopter pad is the best location from a safety, noise, and clinical perspective. The design of the site landscape is in accordance with the city of Wheat Ridge requirements for open space and landscape as well as the standards set forth in the ODP Design Pattern Book for both the Mill District and the overall Clear Creek Crossing Development. Landscape pattern materials and forms are inspired by the agrarian aesthetic described in the Design Pattern Book and from the flowing movement of the nearby Clear Creek. The curving building lines are reflected in the landscape through paving patterns and plant forms that visually link the site and landscaping to the building. These same patterns transition beyond the medical campus boundary onto the public streetscape for visual continuity and is transitioned into the greater mixed-use development and neighboring apartments. The landscape is also used for visual screening to help scale the building to the pedestrian, emphasize important locations and movements, enhance wayfinding, and add visual interest and support the human health and well-being created by rich century experience. With a strong emphasis on sustainability, the planting palette is consistent with other districts in the ODP and has placed a higher priority on water-wise xeric plant materials that include native and adapted plant species for efficient irrigation. Outdoor spaces for staff, visitors, and all campus users have been identified throughout the campus to provide opportunities for expanded use programs and engagement with nature. The dining plaza with a variety of seating options is placed adjacent to the cafeteria to expand and enhance the dining experience and serve as a staff and VIP gathering venue. Adjacent to the dining plaza and near the main staff door to the building is a garden lounge. The smaller-scale, heavily landscaped is intended to offer a quiet place of respite for staff surrounded by nature. Landforms and lush planting separate these spaces from the surrounding parking and create a sense of enclosure. And the south-facing orientation captures the sun to create a microclimate supporting year-round use. To bring nature into the building, an open-air landscape courtyard is placed adjacent to the hospital lobby and cafeteria and in full view of all who enter the hospital. The multipurpose space is surrounded by glass and plentiful access to invite patients, visitors, and staff to enjoy the garden court. Now shifting our focus to the architecture of the hospital. First, we realize the importance of having a beautiful, welcoming front door to the hospital. As a symbol of care and investment in the Wheat Ridge community, the curved form and the light-filled entry lobby embraces the public arrival, creating a connection that reinforces that sense of community. Second is the material connections. The material palette for the hospital is inspired by the agrarian themes laid out in the Clear Creek Crossing Design Pattern Book. Stone, glass, and metal panels are combined to create a contemporary, state-of-the-art facility that is both well-grounded and open to its surroundings. The warm tones and natural materials will allow the exteriors to feel once comfortable and modern, further enhancing the link to the overall theme of the Clear Creek Crossing Development. Open space connections, as we recognize the importance of nature in this setting, we have taken great care to ensure that the hospital is connected to the landscape. Whether in the eternal sunlit courtyard or the expansive South Garden facing the cafeteria, the hospital well-embraces the healing power of nature. And lastly, functional connections. Operational connectivity is very important to the success of any hospital. For that reason, we have located the parking garage and the first medical office building in close proximity to the hospital, allowing for greater functional flow of patients, visitors, and staff. An enclosed bridge above the busy traffic of the drop-off zone allows for a safer route for all users in this flow. Now moving the discussion to the schedule and timeline. The initial plan development was submitted back in January 22nd. That has brought us to the Planning Commission today, May 20th. We're anticipating hospital construction begins in June 2021. Construction may be completed Q1 2024 and first patient anticipated the second quarter of 2024. In closing, SCL Health and the Lutheran Medical Center remain committed to bringing quality healthcare to the residents of the city of Wheat Ridge and its surrounding communities with a new state-of-the-art medical campus. We will continue to be good citizens and partners to the city of Wheat Ridge. As it relates to the construction, we were also committed to the following: to our new neighbors. Comply with the city's allowable hours for construction. Notify the adjacent neighbors in advance of more disruptive construction activities and provide a distributed 24-hour hotline call number to the adjacent number neighbors to use for concerns or questions. This concludes my presentation and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Okay. Sometimes it gets lost. I can't find the share. Okay. Thank you. So that concludes our presentations, but the applicant myself are here for any questions you might have. So, thank you.
And the applicant that is here tonight for SCL, could you provide that name, please?
That's.
Sorry. That's you, Stephen?
Yeah.
Why don't we go ahead and start with our Ron Robin of our commissioners and we will we will call for questions. At this point, we will hold off on our comments from our commissioners until a little later in the meeting. But for now, we will open it up for questions from the commissioners. And I will go ahead and start with Christine.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson. So I have a little bit of trauma, I guess, from the meeting where we had about noise and oxygen tanks. And I was looking at the enlarged landscape plan and noticed that there is an oxygen tank in the general utility plant. And I'm just wondering if that's the same kind of situation that creates a lot of noise that might be disruptive to people living in the apartments or wildlife on the trail? Or is it just simply a tank and it doesn't have any attachments that creates a lot of noise?
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Steve, I'll answer that question. As you can imagine, being able to provide medical oxygen to a hospital is critical, especially. We found that out through COVID and making sure that we have enough capacity to do that's important. There is no compressor or any other operating equipment there, though, that should be creating any significant noise. I'm sorry, I don't know which other oxygen tank you were referring to, but that wouldn't be the case for the oxygen tanks here.
Commissioner, does neither the tank that you're referencing is a different kind of feature than the industrial oxygenation plant that was at the Rocky Mountain Bottling Company? So in this case, it's strictly sort of an oversized tank that provides oxygen gas for the hospital's use, but is not related to sort of a manufacturing or industrial component. There is one on the current Lutheran campus, I believe, and it's a similar sort of.
It's just simply storage.
Great, thank you.
And we will go to Commissioner Ohm. Any questions will come at this point?
Yes. First question I have is for staff. Would the building department ever approve the CDs for permit prior to receiving approval from the city council on the SDP?
No, so Planning Commission is the last step in the SDP process. We have not approved any permits besides overlot grading is the only one that has been approved and that would be required of any development to bring the site above the base flood elevation. So it's to get it out of the floodplain. Otherwise, we have not approved or even taken in, reviewed at this point, any other permits.
Okay, so I'm a little confused on condition number three because it states, prior to commencing horizontal, vertical construction, civil construction drawing shall be approved in a pro, I guess, never mind. I was thinking that needed to be appropriate permits shall be obtained. Wouldn't that, I'm not sure what is the condition, wouldn't that have to happen anyway?
Yeah, so the civil construction drawings were being reviewed concurrently with this SDP. And they were wanting to submit permits, which we just received the permits themselves, but we wanted to make sure that we got the approval of Planning Commission before moving forward any further.
Okay, thank you. The next question I have will be sheet four, it was the utility plan. There's a, it looks like there's a fuel tank and I wanted to ask why the property is quite large, you know, about 27 acres, why it was placed in that northeast corner of the site, which is the closest proximity it could be to the Clear Creek and to the storm drains? Are there, you know, and what, I guess, what was the process? Is there any type of process or protocols of fuel that fuel spills? Can it drain into the storm? Can that storm connect back to the Clear Creek? Could the tank, could the tank leak in its location or is that a guaranteed? The fuel tank would never.
Yeah, so I know that engineering did review based on the location just to make sure that it wasn't impacting against the storm system, that there were no impacts there. So I'll defer to Jordan. I think he has some good background on this.
Jordan Jeffries from our engineering division is on the line. Jordan, you should be able to unmute yourself if you can hear us.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep.
So Scott, I'm not sure if you're looking at the latest plans. Hopefully you are. But initially, the fuel tank was up there north of the Loop Road and in the first submittal, and we had actually commented on that to move it. And now it's directly east, just adjacent to the central utility plant. So that, you know, that's a good location that limits pipe runs and I think the nearest storm sewer is probably 40 or 50 feet away. So I'm not anticipating any issues. Also, the groundwater is below that storm sewer. So in the instance that there were any leaks from that tank, I don't think it would make it into the storm sewer. But typically, these USTs, underground storage tanks are regulated by the state. So I am thinking that SCL will have to get a permit for that tank. And, you know, it'll likely be double-walled with leak-detection systems and monitoring systems like that. So I don't foresee any issues with the current location of the tank.
Okay, thank you. The next question I have is on the, there's, there's two different sets of landscape plans. One is the one that was included in the original packet and the next one is a supplemental. I'm gonna just ask a question on the I guess it doesn't matter. We'll just talk about the, there's an enlarged landscape plan. And my question is, what is the minimum tree lawn width where the grass is?
So I think the smallest area or the most narrow area would be along crossings drive and I'll pull up. Let's see, would the large, enlarged landscape plan be most helpful, do you think, for this? I can pull that up, but the minimum width is six and a half
Okay.
feet for that area. And then, so sod is really only located along the streetscapes themselves. And then it turns along crossings drive and those tree lawns are eight and a half feet in width.
Then, were there any variances requested?
So not variances, the way that we foresee variances, but there are modifications to the design pattern book to some, like the landscaping, the plant materials. So that was reviewed administratively, similarly to like the multifamily site had a few come and go, had a few foothills, had a few. So realistically, we need to revise the design pattern book to accommodate more plant species type. But it was reviewed and asked, requested as modification, yes.
Okay. So in the, in the design pattern book, 5.1, page 80, it states, "Landscape and irrigation design shall reduce the impact of drought on landscape and provide for efficient water usage." So my question is, and this is for the landscape architect, how do you efficiently water? What is going to be that method to efficiently water a six-and-a-half-foot wide strip of sod?
Yeah, so I've got our landscape architects here with us, so I'm just gonna have them come over and share my, share my screen. So it'll be Lynn Moore from Davis Architects. She's gonna slide into my chair here.
Thank you.
Hi, Lynn, can I get your spelling of your name and address?
Absolutely. It's Lynn, L-Y-N-N, Moore, M-O-O-R-E. My address is 2901 Blake Street, Denver.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, it's a great question. We, to just back up for a second, we have really tried to limit the amount of sod that we have because we know that it consumes more water, obviously, than, than most of the other plant material that we're specifying. And so it will be through a, most likely, a spray system. We're in the process of preparing the construction documents for that, but it will be a spray system. The other thing to point out is that we are specifying a more of like a Texas bluegrass type of sod. So it's a, it's a sod product that takes about 40% less water than a typical traditional bluegrass. So we're very mindful of that.
Thank you. And then I have one more question for you. On sheet L dash four and L dash five, I don't know if you could pull it up, Stephanie?
This is the enlarged landscape plan, correct?
Yeah, there's a, and it's on this one. It does not show up in the, that 80 scale that was in the packet.
Gotcha. Okay, here's L four.
Yes, if you could zoom in on that west side. And let me stop right there. So it says there's a required 20-foot landscape buffer, but the buffer includes asphalt of the street. Is the
Go ahead.
Did the, obviously, it's not, it's not a landscape buffer. It's, it's partially asphalt. So do they require, I guess, a modification or variance because that does not meet that buffer? Please explain.
Yes, so I'll explain on my part and then I'll let the applicant justify themselves as well. But yes, you are correct. There is a required 20-foot landscape buffer between the multifamily site and planning area one here, no matter what ended up coming in. So they did request a modification that was reviewed by staff administratively the way that the design pattern book lets modifications to development standards be reviewed upon. But just for some background context, I think they have 10 feet of actual landscape buffer on their side of the site. And then the multifamily has an additional five feet on their side. So in total, they've got a buffer of 15 feet. It's just shared between the two sites. So there is like that extra five feet to be able to accommodate the drive aisle. And I don't know, Lynn, if you wanna jump into on that.
I think you said it correctly, Stephanie. We did request a modification because of, it's a very tight site, as you can imagine. And as we were developing the plans, there were some things that we were trying to work through with the fire department to make sure that the fire access was adequate. And the amount of space that we had available for that landscape buffer was the cumulative 15 feet. We knew that it was going to be five feet smaller than what was required and that's why we requested that modification. And we tried to, on the other side, the other thing that I guess I want to say is that against the building, it is across a drive. But from the neighboring property, the Outlook Apartments, as you look across, there are different layers of landscape buffering before you get to the building. And so we were, if you go across the street, across the drive up next to the building, there's a pretty hefty landscape buffer that runs all along the west side of the building there.
This portion here?
No, that's, that's across, go next to the hospital. No, that's, that's across the, go, go next to the hospital building. Yeah, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Really that it's sort of a cumulative. We understand the intent of, of a buffer. And so we've been, we're trying to make that a, an additional way to help buffer between the residential development to the west and this facility.
Was the, was that PP symbol? Is that a ponderosa pine or what is that?
I'll have to look and see.
You can, you can get back to me on that if you want. The, the next question I have, Stephanie, if you could put up the L dash six sheet?
Yep.
And this is not a, this is not a landscape portion. So my, my question is, so the, that parking lot is kind of divided in half, right? There's kind of a north half and south half with that landscape median. The, my question, yeah, my question is, is how do the pedestrians, you know, when they get out of their car on that north side of the parking lot, get to a sidewalk? They, I'm seeing landscape. If they went to the north, they'd have to go through the landscape. If they went south to that sidewalk that is in the middle, they're gonna have to go through landscape. It versus if you're, if you're in the south side, you can see that you would just progress probably to north and you would be on that main sidewalk access. And then you could move, you know, east or west, but on the north side, just, do you have to, you're either gonna go through, you're either gonna go through the whole parking lot or you're gonna go through the landscape to get access to one of the sidewalks, is how, how I'm seeing. If you could, if I'm wrong, if you could correct me on that.
No.
To have direct access to the sidewalk and make sure we're accommodating enough for car overhangs.
Yeah, we have, we have some sidewalks that go through there, but I, but I totally see what you're saying. And I think that what, the challenge is we have to provide landscaping and the width that we have, we can't put the walk like on both sides. And so we have looked at ways to kind of collect people as, as what, what made sense to be able to meet kind of the landscape standards as well. But what we, what we can do and what we certainly will put on the table is that we can open up some places for people to be able to get onto that sidewalk from the opposite side.
Oh, thank you. I'll let, maybe staff could work through that.
Yeah, and we, we have like a very, very minor still technical corrections that we're working out. So maybe that's something we can take a look at during that technical kind of period. I, I'm afraid that it'll impact the plant count is my only concern, but that, I think that they'll be able to situate it elsewhere on site.
What was that, what was that mulch material in the general landscape? Do you remember?
It's rock in the parking lot.
What kind of rock? Like cobble or crushed?
It's, it's not gonna be a big cobble. It's gonna be something that you can actually walk on, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have, oh, one other question is, there appeared to be some errors on the landscape plan sheet five that was in the packet. Were those corrected?
You're likely referring to the data table.
Yeah, the sod, the sod.
Yes, that, that is being corrected. It did get corrected on the cover sheet. That one was the same issue. But yes, that is one of those couple technical things. So 30% sod required. And they're providing, or 30% side max.
Right.
And they have about 5% little over.
They have 21%.
They have 21%. I just.
Yeah, cuz it looks like they have.
So that was off too, I see.
Yeah, cuz it looks like the 30% max should be around 86,000 and then the total sod installed is 59,000 roughly, which is 21% of the total landscape. It's showing it as 5%. Is what's in the packet. 5% would be of the entire property. I believe.
Instead of, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we'll just take a second look at the numbers as part of that condition related to technical.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Home. And Commissioner Leo, you had your hand up. We'll go ahead and go to you.
Yes, I, one question I had was answered, but the other one, I didn't hear or I missed, how many beds are in Lutheran right now?
Yeah, we have licensed bed of 338, yeah, 338.
So we're going down to 210. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Is there, with that in mind, is there any thought that at some point there will be an expansion of the first phase of the building?
Yeah, so from a design perspective, some of that beds are shelled space, so it'll last for growth. And then the plan does contemplate adding additional capacity from an architectural standpoint, if and when it, it is, is needed.
Yeah, it's just question, I mean, we're building a brand new hospital with the population growth. I, I just don't understand why we would go and be going to less beds and it doesn't.
Yeah, no, I, I understand the, the question. I, I can tell you that building the right capacity for now and the future is something that we spend a lot of time studying and we think that, that the way we've sized the hospital and its potential, potential growth. So it is designed to go from 210 to 247 by adding additional capacity. And we think that that is appropriate, given the population growth and, and the overall sort of capacity in the area.
Okay, still is a question in my mind, but I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. We will go to Commissioner Antle. I'm sorry, she's.
He's not here tonight.
My mistake. Sorry about that. Commissioner Kurt, Kurt Schreiber, please.
Thank you. I just had a, a quick, I think, couple of questions about the parking. Is it possible to pull up again the map that showed sort of the traffic flow and the parking layout?
From the applicant's presentation, do you think that was?
I think it might have been from this staff presentation. I can't remember now.
Yeah, hold on, give me a sec. Okay, I'm almost there, sorry. I think the applicant may have good details to, it looked like in their present, oh, sorry. Okay, let's just go from here.
Yeah, that map. Thank you. Appreciate it. So my question mainly has to do with, it looks like the building is in pretty close proximity to, I think, directly adjacent to a planned, or I think it's already being built, residential sort of development, a multifamily residential development. Is there, are there going to be, I guess, kind of two-part question. Are there going, is there going to be direct access from the parking areas of the residential development into the parking areas for the hospital? And if so, are there, has there been discussion about sort of routing the traffic flow away from the residential area? So that we don't sort of increase traffic flow from the hospital sort of through the residential area? Does that make sense?
Yes, and it's a great question cuz we've gone back and forth on this a lot. The design pattern book requires that interconnectivity actually, so ways to balance it. It definitely does connect directly on this portion on the west side. That will be a little bit of a limited access drive. We're still working through the actual details, but likely we'll have some signage that only allows kind of the residents to take that route versus like general public to be able to do that. So this whole loop is not intended for general public use. However, we do need that interconnectivity to the multifamily so that they have more options than just going out clicker drive as well as fire having their secondary access. So that is actually a fire access here. It also connects to multifamily on a direct drive aisle on this north side there.
The one thing I might add is, what you're not seeing in the bigger picture here is that the multifamily site is at the sort of the dead end of Clear Creek Crossing. It's not through. There is a signal, you can see the annotation down here at the intersection of 40th and Clear Creek Drive, and there will be one in the future. So we expect more traffic to be coming south to get to those signalized locations than to be going northwest towards sort of the dead end of the development.
I gotcha.
You could actually see how the multifamily is developed. It'd be, it'd be very torturous for someone to think multifamily site would be faster. I think what we, to the city's requirement, we wanted to be able to provide access out of the multifamily development out, out of that. And so that's what we complied with.
Right, okay, thank you. And sort of on that note, and I think I probably know the answer to this, but has there been coordination with the multifamily site to ensure, cuz it looks to me like actually a lot of the parking in the multifamily site is much closer to the hospital than some of the parking for the hospital. And I assume that there's been coordination with the multifamily site to prevent hospital patrons from parking in the multifamily site.
Yes, so Steve may have more information than I do on that, but I believe the multifamily site is like resident permit parking type of situation.
That's, that's kind of what I figured. I just wanted to put it out there. And then my last question about it. I, it wasn't super clear to me on the map how many points of sort of egress and ingress there were from sort of the main, I guess 40th is kind of the main road through there into the parking area.
Yep, so the orange are the vehicular access points, really one main, and there'll be a traffic signal on 40th there. The one on the east side is intended for emergency vehicles and utility, or like loading type of situation. And then off a Clear Creek Drive, you have one main vehicular access. So one off Clear Creek Drive, two off 40th technically, but one that's intended to be public. And then multiple points. So the yellow is the pedestrian where the sidewalks connect up to 40th Avenue. So multiple points of connection there.
And so I'm assuming that there was some conversation or study about, I, I guess I'm just wondering, there's, I think we in total, something in the, in the range of 1,200 parking spaces within effect, one or maybe two access points. Is, does that, is there a feeling that's a sufficient amount of access points for that number of parking spaces?
There is, yes. So there's multiple drive aisles throughout that are kind of more streetscape-like. And then you can clearly get out, you can also get out with the Clear Creek Drive. So this, this main loop from 40th to Clear Creek Drive that we're calling crossings drive is really intended to feel like a local street. So they will have direct access from pretty much any parking lot to that main loop.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Those are my questions.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Kurt Schreiber. I just have a couple, a couple of questions. The first one, and so we're clear on that last point. 40th is where the, the underpass of IDOC to, I believe it's, is it Applewood? So there's access from east of the highway off of Surface Street.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, okay. And, and I would think that particularly for the emergency ambulances and whatnot, that coming in off of Applewood would make a lot of sense instead of having, if they're not on the highway, direct access. And that the first, it looks like the first point you turn after going underneath I-70 would be to the hospital Loop Road.
Yeah, if, if the ambulances are coming that route, yeah, I mean, that's the reason why it's designed there to sit there so they can just make that first right turn into, into the, to, to the emergency department.
Right. The, the other question I have is on the physician parking lot, that's exclusively for the use by physicians, I guess, and is that the northeast corner?
That's correct.
Is that parking lot covered?
Uh, no, it's a surface parking, not covered.
Okay, and then the, my next question then is, with all of this paved surface area, drainage is gonna be critical if, for any rainfall larger than a couple of, you know, you know, tenths of an inch. Tell me a little bit about where the, the rainfall runoff will head to through the, the utility easements and whatnot, or the drain, the storm drain easements. Where does that water wind up at?
We've got Jordan on the call or Steve, if you have one of your engineers, either way, Jordan, are you still there? There you go, thanks.
Sure, I, yeah, so if you can, I don't know if you can pull up an overview map, but there's a regional water quality pond directly to the north of the hospital. So there's, there's a large main on the east side of the site. And then there's also some storm sewer on the west side of the site, and it's basically all routed to the north. The roofs will all be connected into the storm sewer system as well. And it will be directed into that regional water quality pond directly to the north. And then it'll flow into Clear Creek after it's been treated. And this water quality pond was designed along with the overall development. And SCL has submitted kind of a follow-up study to show that they are in compliance with the assumptions and that were made as part of that original report. So they are meeting drainage requirements. And usually planning involves the planning for a, an unusual, say, once in a every hundred years rainfall event. Does it meet that qualification? It does, yes. Okay, very good. All the questions I have, we can go for one more round of questions if any of the commissioners are interested. Hearing none, we will go on to the public comment portion of our hearing tonight. I will now open the public comment portion of our hearing tonight. If you wish to comment on this case, you'll have a maximum of three minutes. When we recognize you, please give us your name, spell your last name and share your address. We will now unmute all participants. Please keep background noise to a minimum. And if you do not plan to speak at this time, you may mute yourself on your own device. So Lauren, can I see if we have people that are interested in speaking this evening?
Yes, just a moment. I'm unmuting people. The first hand that I have raised here is Tyler Carlson. Tyler, if you want to unmute yourself, you're welcome to go ahead and talk. Tyler, if you can hear us, you can unmute and go ahead and talk. There you go.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, guys. Tyler Carlson, last name C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I'm managing partner of Evergreen Development. Address is 1873 South Bel Air Street, Denver, Suite 1200. Just wanted to reiterate what's already in my written letter of support for the SCL application. You know, they've been a wonderful partner for our project over the last several years. There's been a lot of very close collaboration on not only the design, but the interaction of the hospital with our multifamily project immediately adjacent and also our future and in-process retail applications across the street. And are just really excited to see them reach this stage. You know, they are the biggest anchor of our project. And just couldn't be more thrilled with how it turned out. The, the design has been phenomenal. And really just look forward to seeing them getting under construction. So no opposition from us. So uh, no opposition from us, full support. And again, thankful for the collaboration with not only SCL's team, but also, you know, staff. Uh, this is a, a very complicated SDP. Uh, and one of the most significant buildings to be built in the modern history of Wheat Ridge. So it's uh, took a lot of time and effort and just want to thank everyone involved for the job well done. And again, very supportive of this project, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
If, if anyone else would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. Um, if you're on the phone, you can raise your hand using star nine, or just go ahead and unmute yourself. We do have one member in the audience who's, I'm getting a message that says uh, this Lindsay um, bees zoom is an older version. So I'm going to add you as a panelist real quick to see if you would like to speak, because I'm not able to unmute you. One moment. Lindsay, if you can hear us, you should be able to speak now if you would like to.
Uh, no, uh, well, I guess I can say a couple things. Uh, Lindsay Bernie, B U, B U R N E Y, uh, 3880 Garrison Street, Wheat Ridge. Um, and I just lived down the street from the current hospital, and so I'm just, you know, much like Tyler just mentioned, we're, we're, my family's very excited about the new build. And everything that's going in over at Clear Creek, because it just means great things for Wheat Ridge. And as a member of this community, I just appreciate SCL Health being here. Um, you know, I just had a baby at that hospital a couple of months ago, and so it's really nice to know that they're staying in our community. And are going to continue to provide excellent care for my family and for the other people here in our surrounding community. So I'm in total favor of this project as just as Tyler mentioned, and thanks for allowing me to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Bernie.
All right, next up, we have um, Mark O. Do you see your hand raised, you're welcome to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mark Omillian, O M I L I A N. My address 10495 West 35th Place in Wheat Ridge. Uh, resident of Wheat Ridge, I'm also the director of construction for Evergreen Development on the multifamily project. Very excited about this project as well, uh, great addition to the community, spectacular design, very excited as we've been able to see this. As, as a member of the community, I echo the previous comments that I'm very pleased that the hospital is staying. And upgrading facilities and, and will put this world-class facility in our, in our neighborhood and continue to serve this community. So very supportive, uh, very excited about seeing it come to shape, and uh, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Omillian, anybody else?
I don't see any more hands raised, if you would like to speak, the raise hand button is at the middle of the bottom of your screen. Or if you're on the phone, you can either unmute or go ahead and hit star six to raise your hand, we'll give folks a couple minutes. I've got a hand raised from Robert, if you can unmute yourself on the phone by hitting star six, you're welcome to talk. There we go.
Good evening, my name is Robert Place, P L A C E, I reside at 3371 Cranston Circle in Highlands Ranch. I'm the vice president of Colorado Multifamily for Evergreen Dev Co. Uh, I'd like to follow up on a couple of items that we are exceedingly pleased with the site plan that SCL has put together. They've been very sensitive to our requirements uh, for our multifamily. And we've worked quite extensively with your staff during the planning process of the multifamily to make sure that the connectivity was appropriate. And would not be harmful to the multifamily development. So uh, we are in full support of the plan as presented to you. Uh, wanted to address the parking issue. Uh, we do use a parking sticker on our residents' car, and we are also equipped with video equipment. Located focused on that area between the two uh, uses so that we can monitor it from our clubhouse. And if it comes a problem, I'm certain that we can work with the hospital to resolve any cross-access issues there. Uh, also landscaping, one of the objectives that we had was the pedestrian connectivity between the two sites. And I think that's been handled very appropriately from the landscape perspective. We didn't want to be totally buffered from the hospital. We anticipate that we are going to have uh, employees of the hospital as residents. And we, we also expect that just the hospital will help the value of our property over the long term by keeping us with regular tenancy. So if you have any questions of me on the site plan, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Place.
Thank you.
No more hands raised at the moment, but we'll, I don't know if I see one.
We will give just a, maybe another half a minute or so, if anybody else would like to comment. And uh, at this point, we will ask the staff and possibly the applicant, if there are any questions that were raised, you feel uh, may, you may want to uh, discuss again. Or uh, maybe a point that you feel like, you know, you would like to have made regarding some of the questions that came up. At this point, we will throw it back to, to the staff or the applicant.
Yeah, this is Steve, we don't have any other comments.
No other questions from me?
I'm going to go ahead and close, disable the public comment if that's okay with you, Chair.
Since there are no further responses, we will close the public comment portion of tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
And we will. Close the public comment, we'll entertain a motion. From the commission before we go to discussions. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I moved to approve case number WZ dash 21 dash 01. Request for approval of specific development plan for the construction of a 630,000 square foot hospital. And parking garage on property located at the northeast corner of West 40th Avenue, Clear Creek Drive. Within Planning Area 1 of Clear Creek Crossing for the following reasons. One, the specific development plan is consistent with the purposes of planned development. As stated in section 26 dash 301 of the Code of Laws. Number two, the specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. Number three, the proposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. Number four, all responding agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Number five, the specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the outline development plan. And with the city's adopted design manuals with the following conditions. Number one, the technical corrections requested by planning related to labels and notes shall be addressed prior to SDP recording and prior to issuance of any building permit. Number two, the developer shall enter a development agreement with the city to be recorded with a county clerk and recorder. An associated financial guarantee shall be provided prior to issuance of building permits. Number three, prior to commencing horizontal or vertical construction, civil construction drawings shall be approved and appropriate permits shall be obtained. Number four, building permits middle shall be consistent with the SDP.
Thank you, Commissioner O, can we get a second?
A second.
Thank you.
I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have one thing I'd like to discuss. I, I don't wish to make it a condition, but uh, the one thing I do want to discuss is that. A six and a half foot wide turf area with overhead spray is not efficient. Um, as that typical spray hit is probably an eight foot radius, which would have to be reduced. And it's very likely that that runoff will be on the sidewalk in the road. Some communities that are water efficient such as Cass Rock, uh, they have like a minimum 10 foot width um, for overhead spray. I've also seen that like in the Southern Nevada Water Authority. And they've even gone so far as to say that uh, no overhead spray within two feet of hardscape. That is the, the, you know, eight foot is probably the minimum. That's would be preferable to me, I think the six and a half foot wide at that point should probably be considered. Just put in some more uh, water efficient plants and put it on a drip system. That's all I have to say about, about this on.
Thank you, Commissioner O. Are there other points for discussion?
Well, I just want to say that I really am in favor of this whole project and. Um, I'm agreeable to it, but I still would like to add that I have concerns about the size of the hospital. Just want that on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Oh, the commissioners, any discussion? We will uh. I'll, I'll limit my comments to uh, again, some things that have already been brought up. The, the level of attention to detail uh, on this uh, SDP is, is really, it's commendable. And uh, oh, we believe that, I believe that this is, is a very, very important addition to the city of Wheat Ridge and uh, and its future. We uh, I also believe that is uh, everything I've seen points to a consistency uh, that is sort of guided by the uh. The design pattern book, I think there is probably provided more help and, and uh, than, than most other developments I've seen of this scale. This is a, it really is impressive. Going forward, I uh, we, we know that we do have uh, one or two more items regarding this property, particularly that future office building is going to go in. We will look forward to seeing that, and I'm sure it's going to, like everything else, it will be uh, consistent. Which is really the important, one of the most important points of, of uh, of anything that is considered for this property. I will, one more chance for any commissioners that would like to make a comment, or uh, any maybe other questions for that uh, for staff? Commissioner O.
Yeah, I do want to say one last thing that um, looking at the uh, the enlargement landscape plan that the landscape architects did do a really nice job. On um, putting together something that's going to have a lot of different visual interests. And so I, I do appreciate that, so I just want to go on record and, and uh, look forward to seeing that installed, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O. If there's no other discussion, we will call for a vote. Raise your hand visibly to support the motion, commissioners.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, we will now uh, open for old, old business, is there any old business tonight?
Let me, I'm gonna, Steve, thank you for joining us, we appreciate you being here, I'm gonna bump you back down to attendee, go ahead. Thanks. Um, let's see, sorry, give me just a minute, got too many windows open. Okay, um. And I'm not looking at my agenda, is old business where we have our project updates?
Uh, I believe it, it's as good a point as any, yes.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, um, so a couple of project updates, this time less about properties and more about projects and finding my notes. Um, so the first update I wanted to share with you, I'm not putting you on the spot Stephanie, but I realized I want to give a quick update on Lutheran. Um, last time we met, I think we'd had the uh, tour on the campus, and I just want to share with you and the public. Um, that we have a virtual tour loaded onto uh, whatsupwetridge.com. I'll share my screen, because we've actually never done it quite this way before, we have an incredible videographer that we work with. And it truly is, it's like if you've seen the sort of 360 home tours before, um, this is the virtual tour. So you can follow anywhere on the route that we had um, in person. And as you go along the route, you can click on certain icons um, to open up the boards that we had there in person. So it truly is about as close as we can get to mimicking, my computer's going to be slow now, um, mimicking uh, the actual experience. So it walks very much like Google Street View. Um, so if you haven't been on campus, or you are listening and didn't get to join us for the tour, we would encourage you to go to whatsupwetridge.com. Um, and, and walk through there, we'll leave that uh, available for folks, because as we go through the process, obviously. Um, it gives us a perspective that we can't get on Google Street View, but it's also really valuable, so that was exciting. Um, we do now also have uh, our next public meeting scheduled. We get a lot of information out to you in the email, um, but it is on June. Of course, I didn't read down the date.
Yeah, we're at June 10th from 6:30 to 8.
Thank you, um, that will be a virtual meeting, just because it, we don't want to limit the number of people that would be able to come. And right now there's a limit, I believe, at 100, uh, and we'll have a companion activity online to accompany that. Um, and we'll get you, like I said, more details here soon. Um, the other update I wanted to share tonight, it relates to short-term rentals, so you saw code amendment, we don't often circle back on our code amendments. Um, but City Council did approve the short-term rental ordinance in very much the same approach that you saw. There are a couple tweaks to some of the um, code language in the licensing component, so. Chapter 11, uh, and we did start licensing on May 1st, so it's been going smoothly. We have an online process through a third party. Anybody who um, we could identify through looking at listings who has a short-term rental would have received a letter in the mail from us. Or proactively to give them directions on how to register. Um, we've had a steady pace so far, I think we have maybe almost 30 folks registered now. Um, and the time period that we're asking people to get licensed, if you're currently an operator, is by August 1st. So we're, we're doing a good job with that, I think. Um, and then my last update comes to about uh, virtual versus in-person meetings. So I know a lot of you have been following probably the public health orders, just in terms of the clear zone, masks and whatnot. Jurisdictions and cities can sort of create their own rules as an organization or as a um, government. Uh, on June 7th, I believe I shared last time, City Council is meeting in person in a study session, and they will discuss um, continued in-person meetings at the dais. If they decide to sort of reopen the dais for in-person meetings, then I do expect Planning Commission would return um, to in-person meetings as well. You may recall that last year, we had a, an issue where we had published meetings in person, and then COVID happened, so we had to switch to virtual. And it meant a couple items had to get continued or delayed. And we are working with the city attorney to, to do publications for projects to allow us a little bit more flexibility. So if we publish a hearing, we will, you know, if we can be in person, we will, but if something were, were to change with the COVID rules. Um, we'd be able to switch to a virtual format without having to delay our, our business proceedings, so. Uh, more details to come, in terms of those upcoming dates, we don't expect to have a meeting on June 3rd. We do expect to have a meeting on June 17th. I think that's everything I had. Unless you have questions on those items.
Is there any update on the property between 44th and the high, and um. Uh, along 44th on the east side of Kipling.
No current update, so that, that was a property that had a concept plan approved, its own mixed use. Um, we did pre-up actually just today uh, for their subdivision, it's made up of a variety of parcels right now, even though it's completely vacant and under one ownership. I think it's at least four or five parcels. So if they move forward, it will be a subdivision that creates the street grid right of way, and sort of a northern block and a southern block. Um, and so that's what I expect you would see next, uh, because it's on mixed use, the site plans for that, assuming they comply with the standards, wouldn't go to Planning Commission. Um, but I don't know what their timing might be.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question, has there ever been any um, thought to how much uh, I guess I'd call pedestrian traffic. Along the Clear Creek or bicycle traffic, because we're, we're adding, you know, like, how do you quantify that? Um, I mean, traffic does it, the traffic study is based on, you know, so many counts, so how do you, you know, we're putting all these apartments and everything on a Clear Creek, which, which is good. But at some point, that Clear Creek may become very congested and not a good experience. And, and just thinking forward, like, how do you, how do you take a pulse of this is working now, you know, kind of like a traffic count?
Yeah. Um, I, I don't know the answer to that from a technical sort of methodology standpoint, but I, I understand that the Parks and Rec Department, I believe, is updating our Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Um, so I can confirm with them that that's a part of it, they do, you know, there is in Parks and Recreation for both park, general parks and also trails. Demand modeling, so we know sort of how many people, um, we can. um, we can support in our facilities and how many facilities we need based on our population. So I I can confirm with them that that's sort of part of their scope of work, but that is a, I believe, an upcoming project.
So is that something that you do tie the development to? Like, you know, for instance, like that multifamily next to the SCL Health New Hospital in a Clear Creek to anticipate.
Yeah, so the nexus there is that parkland fee that you have seen before as a condition of approval. And we modified the code maybe eight years ago to say that the fee in lieu of parkland can be um, used towards trail infrastructure as well as just sort of green parks. And that has enabled us to make improvements to um, that recreational amenity as well.
Would there ever be, um, since we were past the uh, what was it? The was it the internet or fiber optic? There's something that we passed a couple of years ago, right? That I I've seen some partnering where you know, the cities municipalities have this, you know, easements access like the Clear Creek. And they need somewhere to put that fiber optic. And so they they put that underneath those types of infrastructure.
I I don't know the answer to that. I I mean, um, part of Clear Creek is uh, in our, exactly. It's either, there are portions of it that are either county-owned or the county has a reverter on, which means there's no other use without county approval, whether it's drainage facility or optic or utility. So I know there are um, mul- multiple layers of approval that would be a part of that, but I'm not up to speed on what what.
I have no further comments. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments uh, from the commission? Well, then, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
My motion, we adjourn.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. We call for a vote on the motion.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, everybody. We will see you on the seventeenth of June, right?
Thank you.